Ronnie McCann took third place. All of them qualified to go to the state championships in Atlantic City and did an amazing job representing Liberty. Turgor Prasinko was selected third team all short conference by the Asbury Park Press. Also, the Lions coach, John, has been nominated for the short conference coach of the year award. They weren't the only ones to have standout performances. Our Liberty cheerleading team won the large all music state championship. This is the third consecutive year they have won this title. Amazing job, girls. We would also like to recognize a few individuals for their success. Congrats to Jane Arima, Sophia Pinto, and Lawrence Zelini for being named February athletes of the month. Lucas Latif earned recognition from the boys' basketball team and was named first team OB central. Additionally, Jose Lenes Martinez and Turner Humes were named February seniors of the month. And Isabella Osekeisha was selected as a committee chair for the 2024 New Jersey Model Congress. Congratulations to everyone. Several other clubs are raising money for scholarships and events. The second annual Rock Break Series tournament was a huge success as staff and students participated in intense matches with the winner being Danny Cruz. This was a fun event that everyone enjoyed and helped create a strong bond between the Lion community. The girls soccer is hosting another chocolate cover fundraiser on Thursday, March 28th. To celebrate spring and bring a few smiles to the faces of your friends and family in Jackson, the Jackson Liberty Band members are hosting their fourth annual You Have Been Agged fundraiser. Everyone is really getting into the spirit of this time of year. Our spring spirit week is a huge success as students and staff are participating with great enthusiasm. The student council has another one planned at the end of the month as a way to kick off opening day for spring sports and gain momentum from the upcoming pep rally. We are very excited for the start of our new sports season this week and wish every single one of our teams best of luck this year. The Jackson Liberty Band did an outstanding job at Disney World as they led the parade. Our Jackson Liberty Jazz Band had a great night at Designer High School Jazz Festival, receiving section and outstanding musician awards. They're also hosting a jazz musical festival on April 13th that will showcase live jazz performances from 17 area schools. Moreover, our art department and academy worked hard to create a memorial event when the Jackson Academy of Arts hosted the museum night art show. We would like to congratulate all the artists who participated in this showcase and thank all parents and staff who helped support the amazing talent that was displayed at the event. The Jackson Liberty High School Lions closet will be open for the Jackson community on Thursday, March 21st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., so be ready to get your apparel for just $1 each. Jackson Liberty High School is hosting a trade and jobs fair tomorrow, Thursday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We hope to see you there. Moreover, the PTSN high school organization will host a volleyball tournament and gift auction on April 18th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. It is going to be a night of competition and fun. The Jackson Liberty High School Cars is hosting a dessert theater this Friday in the main hallway. As you can see, Liberty is staying involved and participating in different activities. I appreciate you giving me this platform to best represent some of the good news circulating around Liberty. We appreciate the opportunities that we have and thank you for your support through them all. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Jose. Boy, there is a lot going on there at Liberty. Wonderful things to celebrate as well, great accomplishments by students. So from Memorial, Jamil, could you please come to the podium?
Good evening, Mrs. Formilly, members of the Central Administration Staff and Board of Education members. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight in regards to Jackson Memorial High School. Spring is officially here and there's a lot to talk about. Winter sports have officially come to an end with boys and girls basketball making a run for the state sectional title. Girls wrestling ended at the top in the state once again, continuing the legacy, and boys' wrestling ended making a run defending their former, 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 yeah, former sectional title. Winter track had a good season along with boys and girls swimming and girls and boys bowling. However, all endings start new beginnings. Spring sports are back in action with boys baseball, girls softball, girls and boys lacrosse, spring track, boys tennis, and girls and boys golf, all ready to make a run for the 2024 spring season. Scheduling for classes has officially been finished to all grade levels, including juniors, sophomores, freshmen, and even the incoming class of 2020, which that's insane saying out loud. Jackson Memorial High School had some of the best success ever seen with the March Into Wellness Fair held at the beginning of March. We had over 22 vendors, four physical and mental therapy dogs, mental health services, and addiction services. This was nonprofit and done to benefit all students to all grade levels. We had a great turnout and overall it was a great event. The school loved it and many people continue to ask when the next fair will happen. We have to give a big thank you to Mrs. Caggianno, our student assistant counselor, and the guidance department for all the time and effort they put into setting this up. This week during Common Period, there are conferences being held for coping with social media and all of its burdens and coping with stress and all the big issues in life. The theater had much success as well with their latest musical, Mary Poppins. With the help of over 100 students making up the cast and crew, they were able to create one of the most successful plays this year, which showed in the great crowds that attended. The same week was Battle of the Classes, and after a solid week of challenges and events, it finally came down to the last couple points in the end. All classes were represented with their pride within the school and through everyone's surprise, the freshmen won the competition. In other news, the Marine Corps visited the school with returning alumni to show many options they provide for any students interested in serving. Junior formal bids have just started being sold and it will be held May 10th at Jumping Brook Country Club from 6:00 to 10:00. Mr. J M H S will be held March 26th to the 27th during Common Period, and the senior crowned will win a free prom bid for him and his date. Speaking of prom, many seniors begun to realize how close we are to the end. We enter our last two marking periods together and after just a short 60 days, we will walk the stage on Jack Monley Field to move on into the next chapter of our lives. I'm speaking the truth when I say this is very scary. However, all seniors are duly prepared. I would like to thank Mrs. Formilly and the Board of Education for your continued support and thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. I'm excited to speak again at our next meeting on behalf of Jackson Memorial High School. Thank you. Have a good spring break.
Thank you, Jamil. Incredible report again, lots of things happening, lots of things to celebrate at both of our high schools. And yes, it goes quickly. Once we hit spring break, you return, it's going to go very quickly. So enjoy every minute and every opportunity, seniors. So moving on, as has become tradition this year, Ms. Irwin puts up slides to help everybody see some of the wonderful things that are happening across the district. So I just want to remind the board members, if you look behind you as I speak, there are some slides of some other highlights, some of which you just heard from the high school board reps, but we have so many wonderful things that happen on a daily basis. We try to use this platform to show some of the things that happen within our school district. There's much, much more on a daily basis. But coming up tomorrow, we have the Trade and Jobs Fair, very first trade and job fair. Very excited for that. And it's at Liberty tomorrow evening and it is, it's going to demonstrate career pathways. We'll have both trade people there and certification programs there and to show pathways that to careers that don't require a four-year degree. It's very exciting. And as you well know, you, I'm sure you've seen, you know, articles on this or heard news, you know, reports on this that we need tradespeople. And so we want to highlight some of those career paths for our students. And so very excited for this first one coming up. So if you're available, come out and see them. Lots of opportunities. Last night, we had the elementary district spelling bee. And although I couldn't attend, I was able to watch it later in the evening from home and it was very enjoyable. And boy, did those elementary students just blow my mind, getting up on that stage in front of a large audience, spelling very difficult words. I know at their age, I definitely could not have done that. Congratulations to all of the winners and all of the students that participated. It was, it was a great event. So as both of our high school board reps mentioned, we had both of our high school musical plays recently. I was fortunate enough to attend both of them. They were phenomenal, as always. Always involves many students, lots of students onstage, behindstage, the staff involved. Everybody puts forth so much effort and so much of their time. It's really like a massive event that needs to be celebrated and acknowledged, right? I mean, I know many of the board members were able to attend as well. So we do have a few little clips that Ms. Irwin's going to pop up for you to take a look at.
(singing) A father, a mother, a daughter, a son. A father, a mother, a daughter, a son. The friends are there, always cool and then I'm done. Something is needed to twist their neck tight. (singing) We wish that we could stay far. We wish that we could stay far. We wish that we could stay far. (singing) We wish that we could stay far.
Stay back, stay back, help, somebody help! (singing) Fights like Gaston, does his lights like Gaston. In a wrestling match, nobody fights like Gaston. And I jump up, 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 and for now let's hit up. Be our guest, be our guest, be our guest, please be our guest. Let the world be done with me! Far from fools made of wax, I'll get down to brass tacks and relax when I'm human again!
So as you can see, just even those small clips, amazing. The talent too, and the voices and the choreography, just, I can't say enough, fabulous. Moving on, we also, have you heard, you heard about the, from Jamil, the Wellness Fair that happened at Memorial during Common Lunchtime? Again, so many available resources for students to review, explore for mental health. And then that eve, later that week in the evening, we also opened it up to the community. Again, just incredible amounts of resources available for people in regards to mental health. You know, we had all sorts of vendors here. It was an incredible event. I also wanted to point out that recently it was Read Across America Week. I know some of the board members came in and read to students. I myself also read to a third grade class at Elms, just very joyful. And over at Holman, you see that the staff perform a couple of skits about Dr. Seuss. It's always a big evening for them. They invite parents in to come see them. So again, a wonderful way to connect with our parents as well. So lots of wonderful things that have happened across the district. You heard some of the other wonderful acknowledgements from our high schools with DECA winning at the state competition and having four, I mean, many students won, but four students specifically are moving on to the internationals and going to competition in California. Incredible. Again, just wonderful things that happen in our programs, our academies. Our Liberty AP students were at Model Congress and did a phenomenal job, a brilliant showing there. They actually had one of their bills go the whole way up to, to the Senate Chamber, which was fantastic. And then you heard about Lucas and his accomplishment in basketball as well. Our Liberty Band was recently at Disney and Memorial is going to be on their way shortly to Disney to have that incredible experience. You heard about the cheerleaders winning again, their competition. So lots of wonderful things and acknowledgements for our students. We also had a preschool evening where the parents came in and they did yoga with their preschool students. So that was a lot of fun, again, and a nice, a nice evening to spend out with your child. We also have our summer camp registration open up in the district, so we encourage people to apply and get registered for summer camp. We're starting to put up some of the other summer activities that are available, some of our other camps that we offer here that are incredible. You see behind me on the screen, so we encourage people to sign up and allow their students to have these great experiences. Obviously, the payment for the tuition to attend those pays for the actual summer camp. And then finally, I do want to announce that we have officially have a district Facebook page. It goes live tonight. So we're excited for that. It's another way to get information out to our community. We know that people like to have information in small soundbites versus reading long emails. I think emails get, we get flooded with emails, so this is the district's way of, again, getting out positive things and information on a fast and quick basis to our community. So look for an email coming out soon from the district, probably tomorrow, with how to find us out there on Facebook. So that's, that's exciting things happening across the district. So moving on to another exciting thing and to make a special note tonight, at every board meeting, as you know, we have our students here from the Digital Media Academy who film us. They also are across the district. That's how I was able to watch the spelling bee last night from home later on. And so they're constantly at every event. And it's just, our academies here are top-notch. They're phenomenal. The activities that are available to our students in the Art Academy, the Music Academy, the Business, the STEM, and the Digital Media Academy, they have top-notch experiences and learning, high-level learning that many other students in other high schools don't get. Our students leave us and go on to do these incredible things, have incredible opportunities, and get selected for these opportunities because of the experiences they've had here. And tonight, we have a graduate student who's been working with us for, for a while, has already graduated, continues to put in endless hours with the district. And tonight, I'd like to call up two of our incredible staff members, Mr. Fron and Mr. Noble, to share a little information about a specific individual who's here this evening. So thank you.
Don't try to run away, Keith. Come on over here.
He's a tough one to trick, let me tell you.
Yeah, it took a while to get him in here. Uh, Mr. Noble, Mr. Fron, I think most of you guys know us, so we're going to take a minute and talk about Keith Flores. So you may not know him, but you've definitely seen some of the things he's done in the district. We graduated hundreds of kids from our program over the years. We have kids at all the major networks. We have kids that started doing business, doing film and TV. We have kids that are working on feature films. It, it's a great opportunity we have here to go through our program and Keith sees that. But all those other students have one thing in common, they all went to college. Now, it took a while, took three years to get Keith to leave here, but he's finally graduating. It's his turn officially graduating to go on to college. Some kids take off after high school and they travel the world and they find themselves. Keith also found himself in the TV studio every day for the last almost three years from 7:00 a.m. to sometimes 8 o'clock at night, volunteering for us. He does tech in the theaters, he helps us with JTV upgrading technologies, and he's been here, you know, he's in before I am most days. We ran the numbers, so Keith volunteered for 4,756 hours since he graduated in June 2021, which is ridiculous. From doing tech for JTV, upgrading the theater technology, he came every day to work, problem solving, fixing things. He probably saved the district literally tens of thousands of dollars for doing the installs, helping us fix things that broke technology-wise. He was always on top of it. Fron and I can't begin to express how grateful we are for him. He's become like an expert in technology over the years, he really has, and he helped grow the theater and the video programs beyond expectation. So he received a pathway scholarship for Full Sail University, which is basically a full tuition scholarship to go there. He leaves on Saturday to pursue his career, his bachelor's degree in show production. Our fear is that he's going to get there and the professors, he's going to know more than the professors, and I'm only half joking. He knows more than everywhere we go for anything we do, he generally knows more than everyone in the room about this stuff, including us, said. So he's a part of the JTV family. We are heartbroken, mostly because we're going to have to start doing a lot more work than we didn't have to do in the last three years, but we know we're excited for his bright future that lies ahead and as he finally spreads his wings. So we love you, Keith. We wish you the best of luck and we thank you for everything over the years. We have an awesome slideshow, Allison. I don't know if you were rolling it. You don't have to look at it now, it was going to be in the background of that, but it's, it's long. I'll send this to you, Keith, you don't need to watch it now, but he's been there for pretty much every single, that's him when he started in the JCD Film Camp when he was in fifth grade, a long, long time ago. He's been at pretty much every event that we've done, helping us all the time, and he's become like, you know, everyone knows him in the program. He's an amazing help, so. You don't have to show it now, but thank you, Keith, and good luck.
Now, moving on to some other business, this is the time of the year that we work on finalizing a tentative budget for the upcoming school year. The board and the community are aware of the district's financial situations and struggle that we have had over the last six, seven years. Oh my goodness. Aw, gonna get me emotional. So we are going to present the tentative budget tonight to the board and to the community. Tonight, Mr. Boginsky and I, the business administrator, will provide you with an update on the current budget situation for 2324 and then also the tentative budget for the 2425 school year. So we're going to head to the podium for that. So, as I said, we are going to, we're going to do a little update first, a recap of where we currently are, where we were for the 2324 school year budget and where we currently are, and then we'll go into the tentative budget. So just as a reminder and a recap, for the 2324 budget, we had to make some significant cuts. So you see here on the screen some of those things that we did cut in this current school year's budget. We increased class sizes and overall, since our S2 legislation's been in place and the district's been receiving major reductions in our state aid, we've lost a total of 215 positions in this district across all different departments. And it has been a difficult time for the district. We have worked hard to keep as many things intact for our students as possible, as you saw and heard tonight in some of the presentations and the wonderful things happening across the district. But last year, as you saw, for this current budget season, we, we cut all of this and we still couldn't come up with a balanced budget. And so you see here, we wanted to create a balanced budget, but we felt it was not appropriate to cut any deeper. We would be drastically affecting program in the district. And so we chose to seek a loan for $10.2 million, some assistance from the State Department of Education to help us balance this, balance this current school year. Meanwhile, we continue to educate and advocate and educate decision-makers, legislators, and the governor's office and Department of Ed of what was happening here in Jackson. Why was the loan necessary? Well, we were really going through this, this budget extremely detailed as we always do and knew that we couldn't cut any further. We met several times, multiple times with our county superintendent, you've heard me say this before, who has clearly said we have made fiscally responsible decisions. We are fiscally responsible. We have a revenue problem. We do not have a spending problem here. And that the expenses continue to go up for all sorts of, of things that are required within a district and we certainly cannot bring in enough revenue. We had hope, right? I said last year at this time, we have hope that something will change with the funding formula. We had hope that we could balance this budget, we would, that there would be some kind of revenue that would come forward and, but we couldn't work on just hope. That's why we sought the loan. We also tried to bring in some more revenue through a special question that was voted on in November of this year in which, or last year I should say, in which we were going to bring more resources to our students through staffing. And unfortunately, that did not pass, so we could not bring in that extra revenue of $4 million or those extra resources to our students. So where are we now with the 2324 budget? Sure you've read in the paper, you've heard our announcement that we did apply for stabilization aid. We did receive $2.1 million in stabilization aid, which is, is good news. However, that needs to just come off of the loan amount. It's not additional money that we can use to bring anything else into the district or offset any other expense. You know, we were informed that we need, that comes off the loan amount. So we have continued to work with the Department of Education, the fiscal monitor in the district. We meet constantly, we update them on where we're at, and we have been informed that we should receive the loan in April of this year so that we'll be able to move forward and pay our bills in May. So that is some positive news that we will have that loan and be able to move forward. Meanwhile, for the 2425 school year, again, we had hoped that to be some change. There is no evidence of any change in the school funding formula in S2. This 2425 school year is the last year of that legislation, and we did receive a pretty hefty cut for the 2425 school year in state aid yet again. You see there at the bottom of the screen, we were anticipating about an $800,000 based on information that had been given out in the beginning of S2 legislation, that that's what we should anticipate for the 2425 school year. Unfortunately, we are receiving a $4.4 million reduction in state aid. You'll hear some numbers soon from Mr. Boginsky that will show you further what that really means and how that compounds over time to create this deficit of a budget that we are in at this moment. And there also has been no change, any other legislative change, although lots of people have tried, have put bills out to try and help these S2 districts. Nothing has passed at this point that's a significant benefit to us. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Boginsky, who will share with you where we stand for the 2425 tentative budget.
So if you've been at one of our board meetings for the last seven years, you've seen a version of this slide. This is the original S2 schedule of cuts that we were informed of seven years ago, and this is what we've been dealing with. On face value, you look at it and you see it's $22.5 million over seven years. And from the outsider's perspective, you may look at that number and say, oh, over seven years, $22.5 million. This might be something that's doable or something that the district could cut its way through. And I think you're going to see throughout the rest of my presentation that this is not doable and this is not sustainable, and this school district deserves better. Ms. Formilly left off by saying that the last of the S2 cuts should have been $806,460 and it ended up being $4.4 million. And that is just the last of the S2 cuts and really the last thing that we have to deal with on top of all those other cuts that have happened. One of the, the things that, that bothers me the most with this is this time of the year, when the state aid numbers have come out, you see in the press and the media the Biggest Loser list, NJ.com, and I can tell you that during, what you're looking at is the top 10 biggest losers in terms of school districts in terms of total state aid loss over the last seven years, the S2 years. And there's only three school districts that are on that list every year, with Jackson Township being one of them. So other school districts come, come on, come off, but when you see that we have lost and one of the, been the biggest losers of state aid every year, you think about what that has done to our revenue base from a state aid perspective and even the increasing nature of it. It's, it's something that, as a school district, it's almost beyond comprehension of how we can deal with this. Ms. Formilly mentioned the compounding nature of S2, and I'm going to show you a couple of things that are kind of like what-ifs and of things that are kind of like what-if scenarios. On the left, you see the state aid cut as we've been presenting it through the years, that $22.5 million over S2. And in the yellow, you see what our state aid that we actually received, because when we get a cut, it doesn't just cut for that year, it then cuts the next year, and next year, and the next year. And you see where we were in 2017, 2018, at $49 million, and almost half of that as we look into next year, 2024, 2025. If you kind of what-if this and think about, well, what if the state just froze us? If they froze us seven years ago and said, Jackson's not going to get any more state aid, that's, you know, this is what you're going to get, you're going to live with that state aid every year for the next seven years, we would have had an additional $83 million over that seven-year period. I could assure you, we wouldn't be in the place we are today if that was the case. Another what-if, maybe even something maybe a little bit more realistic, what if they just decreased our state aid as our enrollment decreased? Because over the state aid years, our enrollment decreased by 15.1% over the seven years. The state aid, as you saw before, was cut in half, 50%. If they had just reduced our state aid by our K-12 enrollment, which is, in theory, what a formula should do, we would have had an additional $52.8 million over those seven Ms. Primili said that we can't plan for hope, we also can't go back in time and say, what if? So where we're at now is really looking at a budget deficit that can be attacked through two ways, either increase revenues or decrease expenses. That's it. So when you look at the revenue side of what we're dealing with, the K-12 state aid, as you saw in S2, has decreased every year, decreased $4.4 million moving into next year. But within that, there are some really damaging numbers, and I will tell you, we get a state aid notice from the state every year. It comes in late February, early March, and on that state aid notice, it tells you what the district is going to be getting and what the district should be getting based on the calculations that the state sets forth. And for transportation aid for 2425, we will be getting $601,355, the same number that we've gotten for the last seven years, frozen in time at what it was back in 2017, 2018. The number that we should be getting on the 2024, 2025 aid notice, $7.7 million. Same thing with security aid, frozen at the 1718 level, it should be $1.8 million. So there's nothing we can do about that, or nothing that I can do about it. Only legislators can do something about that, only the state can. Couple other things we have looking at us in terms of revenue, the COVID era fundings is sunsetting. We've utilized ESER and ARP, the COVID funding, to really just operate. And so this year is the last year that we're actually using those funds, and so in the 2324 budget, the one we're currently in, we have $875,000 worth of salary and health benefits in there, and we have almost $800,000 worth of supplies and parts of services. So next year, we have to build the budget without that. So that already, in a normal year, that would already put us at a $1.5 million deficit. Our surplus, when we were going to, when we were building the budget last year, one of the contingencies about seeking the loan was that we had to drain our surplus. So that's essentially what we did. The state recommends that you keep a surplus of 2% of the general fund, which for a district our size should be more than double what our surplus is. We started this year off with a surplus of $900,000, okay? Our surplus should be every bit of close to $2 million. And what is that surplus used for? It's used for a big organization to take care of things that have to be done in an emergency basis, and we've left ourselves less than half of what the state recommends. And the tax levy cap. So we all are very familiar with the 2% tax levy cap, that we cannot raise the tax levy beyond 2% without going to the taxpayers, and I will tell you that this year, we actually qualify for one of the cap waivers. So we qualify what is called the health benefit tax, health benefit cap waiver. So we will be able to increase the budget beyond the 2% because our health benefit costs have increased proportionally to the same, to the health benefit costs of the state health benefit plan. So we were eligible to raise the tax levy in this proposed budget to $2.7 million, which is a 2.91% increase. We're leaving nothing on the table. In terms of expenses, we are not going to cut our way through this budget. We are not going to cut our way through this deficit. This district has done everything it possibly can to try to not take a loan and to try to save the financial situation of the school district, but there are fixed costs out of our control. You have, you run households and businesses, utility costs just go up and up and up, diesel fuel, natural gas, electric. Think about this, we have 10 schools, two transportation buildings, and an administration building. Also, our special education out-of-district tuition and our, and transportation associated with it, that's dictated by the state. They just tell us what the increase is, and they don't ask us and say, well, you know, can you pay this or should it be, it just told, this is an increase. Insurance premiums, we've done a great job over the years of saving money in insurance, but it has been inevitable that that is not going to last forever. And we're looking at a 10% increase in our health insurance for next year, we're looking at a 9.3% increase for our liability insurance. Those are big, big numbers in the budget. Transportation responsibilities, while transportation aid remains flat, you know that our aid has remained flat for seven years, yet our non-public transportation responsibilities have increased 785% in the seven-year period. We went from some 677 non-public students at the start of S2, we're looking at 5,800-plus non-public students for 2425. No additional state aid. Curricular and instructional needs. I have been on the other end of the table here as assistant superintendent, and I have seen firsthand how we have kicked the can down the road in terms of making purchases that are necessary for curriculum and programs, and we can't do it anymore. It's something that, as a school district, you saw the wonderful things that are happening here. If you want those things to continue, you have to invest in curriculum and program. And next school year, in this tentative budget, we built in a literacy K-8 curriculum adoption and a math 6 to 8 curriculum adoption. We also have had to design and expand programs for multi-language learners. We have 750-plus more multi-language learners that, now than we did at the start of S2. You put that on top of rising inflation, the last three years, inflation in our regional area, 8.2, 6.3, 3.4. That alone is a budget crusher. Think of all the goods and services that relates to. And as Ms. Primili already mentioned, we have to build in the repayment of the MJDOE loan that we have for this year. And so a $10.2 million loan, 10 years, zero interest, we're looking at over a million-dollar payment that we have to build into the budget for next year. So you put all these things together and you say, can we do it? Well, the state makes a determination of, can you do it? It's called the adequacy budget. The state does a calculation of whether or not a school district is funding the educational program to a necessary level to provide a thorough and efficient education for every pupil in the district. By the state's own calculations, a part of that state aid notice, they do a calculation, the adequacy calculation. You see when we fell below adequacy, it was 2020, 2021, okay? That's when the wheels fell off. We were salvaged for that year and really the year after with the COVID money, okay? Ironically, the pandemic saved us and staved off our financial situation, but we dropped back below adequacy in 2022, 2023, 1.1 million dollars below. That was the year we had to drain all existing surplus just to get by. We're in this year. This year, $8.5 million below adequacy. Why did we have to go for a loan last year? We weren't able to adequately provide an education for our students. On the state aid notice, when I opened it up on February 29th this year, $23.7 million below adequacy. So where are we at? What does that mean for us as a school district? Well, what it means is we're going to need to request another loan. So as it stands right now, this is the tentative budget. The final budget will be presented and approved at the April board meeting, but as it stands right now, we've maxed out the general fund tax levy. We've been told by the state what we're getting in terms of state aid. Our federal and state programs, we always budget for a conservative measure of 25% less than what we received the previous year, so that's what that is. The total debt really hasn't changed, and that leaves us a very, very, very large loan to bridge the budget gap that is going to exist in this tentative budget, which would, at this point, be $30.9 million. So I'm going to turn it back over to the superintendent, she's going to summarize a couple of things with the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Boginsky. So in summary, after losing $22.4 million over the last seven years, which is 50% of our state aid, after cutting and cutting and cutting away and eating away at our surplus, using all of our surplus, you know, making reductions for athletic programs, for other programs, and for cutting 214 positions, again, we find ourselves yet again in a situation with another reduction of $4.4 million for the 2425 school budget, in a situation where we will unable to submit a balanced budget unless we take a loan. Also, again, as we have said in the past, we are not making any more sacrifices for our students. We will continue to put our students first and fund these excellent programs, instructional programs that we have, and seek a loan in order to balance this budget. Now, between now and the final budget that gets presented in April, we'll continue to review every line item. We've already gone through it multiple times, but we will continue to do that. Again, we will review all of our revenue, seek to see if there's any other revenue we can bring into the district, but we are very limited with that, and consider all possible opportunities that might come up. There's a lot of buzz out there, there's a lot of state hearings happening right here for the budget. In New Jersey right now, we have many of us who are testifying at those budget hearings to make a case for making some additional changes to the S2 districts to provide them some more funding. So if anything comes our way, we will absolutely be on top of that. We're going to continue to educate our decision makers in this, in this state about what's happening in Jackson, and we're going to continue to be fiscally responsible. If there is something that makes sense to reduce, we will reduce it, but we will not sacrifice our students and our programs for that. And I want to let everybody know that the public hearing will be held on April 24th next month here. In order to comment on the budget that we will present, we will present the final budget. Until then, we'll continue to work on it while seeking a loan in order to balance the budget. So with that, that concludes the tentative budget presentation to the board tonight. Are there any board member questions or comments?
So Ms. Primili, just to be clear, the state of New Jersey sent us a letter letting us know that they know we are $24 million in adequacy, underbudgeted, and they still cut us $4.4 million?
It's not a letter, it's a document that we received with all of the formula numbers and all of the ways in which they calculate and demonstrate the funding that we are getting or what should have been calculated had we not been frozen due to S2 in certain areas. So it's a document that is posted after we get our state aid numbers.
And this is formulated from the state, this document that we, so they know we're under adequacy, yet they still took $4.4 million from us?
It is documented on there, yes.
Which means that they also know that the S2 funding formula is not correct. If they're telling you that you're short of 23 million and taking another, right, that's what that...
Well, the numbers are telling us this, yes, and then those numbers come from the state.
Which comes from the state, which are the same people doing the S2 cuts, so I'm just...
I think that this was eye-opening. I hope our residents watch this presentation because I think they will really understand how we got here and why we are here, so thank you for that.
Can I just ask, do you know, I don't, do you know why it is that they chose to freeze our budget over the seven years of the S2 cuts?
That was part of the legislation.
That was just the legislation at that time?
Yeah, so when that went into effect, any funding that we were currently receiving just stayed at that point, and honestly, didn't really stay at that point because we got reduced.
Yeah, I understand.
Through the S2 cut, but yes, it was part of the legislation.
Understood, thank you.
You're welcome.
So that was a really good presentation, it was very clear, so I definitely appreciate that. I just have a question for you. So this won't end, that, right, every year, you're going to have to ask for another loan, and it's just going to grow and grow and grow, but you also said that it's the last year for S2? So what happens after that?
Good question. So obviously, I don't have a crystal ball to know exactly what's going to happen, but my understanding is that state aid will then be flat. So wherever we're currently funded at now will be funded again the following year.
Below...
Correct.
...number?
That they, yes.
So meaning that they wouldn't give you your transportation S2 funding and your special education and your security funding at their current, so even though the legislation froze you for seven years, it really said it's going to freeze you for your entire existence?
Until new legislation is written to do a different formula.
Thank you.
And so that would mean we would be receiving half of what we received in 1718, so we'll be at $22.5 million.
So what you're, what you're really saying is that, that top 10 list, right, all of those districts and many might be taking loans, that the state is basically bankrupting all of these districts, and it's going to continue to be?
Well, you do see several other S2 districts. Remember, last year when I presented, I said there will be other districts behind Jackson who will also have to seek perhaps a loan because they also won't be able to balance their budget with these next round of S2 cuts. And so we do see other districts around us like Toms River, Lacey. Jackson and Lacey were the biggest cut in state aid for the 2425 school year. So yes, you are going to see other districts, you know, New Egypt Pemberton, I mean Plumstead also is in a similar situation. So yes, I think you're going to see more districts that are going to be in the same situation, we are seeking loans.
I'm not trying to sound like I'm asking the same question, but I have to ask it again. So you're saying that the legislation actually says that they froze our, what we're getting in transportation and security and special education, even though they're...
Calculating higher?
Calculating higher, but they're going to remain the same, whatever your state aid ends at this year, so technically, you will not be given the appropriate...
That we calculate at?
Ever. I just have to ask it again.
So again, I, that is what I'm hearing?
Okay.
I don't have any solid confirmation of that. We're still, you know, a year away from that, really, to know more about it, but my understanding from hearing through other people is that, yes, it will just stay flat. Because it ends the legislation for S2, so...
So the calculations go away, so to speak, at that point?
I guess.
You don't know?
I don't know.
Okay. I just had to ask it again.
Sure.
I just have one question that I still can't wrap my head around. So the years like this year, and I know, I think it was last year too, where we, you were given that schedule, which you showed in the beginning, every year, what was coming off for S2, right? Year one was one point, and it was kind of like a pyramid, and then in the middle, there was, and then it was supposed to drop. This year was only supposed to be 800,000, and he came back and said, we're taking 4.4 million, right? So we were given a schedule, and yet they deviated from the schedule. So again, where does the formula calculate?
Right, and I, again, I don't know the details of that. As you know, we have tried to understand that formula, there's been lawsuits about the formula, but my understanding is it has to do with enrollment drop and also local fair share of taxes being contributed.
So they froze our trans, so they froze everything else, but they didn't free, like, they were able to adjust those numbers at their will based on some strange enrollment number that's not accurate for us? Like, did they send a letter with that? Like, how did that come that we're, we just got told it'll be cut 4.4 instead of 800,000?
Yes, again, it's in that document in which we see, after the governor has his budget address and shares it, then we receive our numbers, and our numbers are several pages of formulas and documentation with numbers on them, and, which finalizes, here's what your state aid is for the 2425 school year, and we see that it is 4.4 million less. Yes.
Having a state monitor, is there anything that will be done on that end to help our district out?
Ms. Morris, would you like to take that?
Not really, but I guess. I'm not sure everybody understands the adequacy issue, and certainly, anybody that knows more... more than I do, which is probably everybody, but the state attempted through S2 to look at districts that, and I won't name them, but who were virtually increasing in property value, decreasing in enrollment, but had had longstanding practices of being awarded large amounts, not your district, but large amounts of state aid. What this particular issue addresses is that there is, has been the assumption in S2 that the tax levy can afford to donate, if you want to call taxes donations, more money to the support of the local school district, and therefore lessening the burden on the state. So when you say, when S2 sunsets, that it may stay just as it is at that point, what you're saying is that the state anticipated that at the end of those five years, that would have been able to really adjust itself, and you would have seen a better equalization of what people were paying. Now, the difficulty with that, obviously, is that there's the assumption that because your property value has increased, you have the ability to go to your checkbook and write a bigger check for your taxes. We know that's not always the case, particularly in some of the districts, in the urban districts, where people simply do not have that kind of money. I think that's what is forcing this to remain pretty much the same. There is a formula in place. As Nicole indicated, we have no information as to whether it's, we're going to see another one or a different one once S2 goes away. But basically, that's what everybody, I think, is waiting to hear, whether we're going to be looking at the same amount of money or, you know... But keep in mind those three factors. Your enrollment is involved, the property value, assessed valuation of the property, that is extremely important if the value of, and we know most of New Jersey properties have increased in value, even after the COVID issue, and so that contributed in a negative sense to a district like this. And you have, you know, the district, from what I have seen thus far, and again, I have only been here a short time, but I can tell you that I think the district has worked, you know, night and day to try to protect the integrity of your program for your students, which is really what education is all about and why we should all be here. There is no problem with the spending aspect of it. The problem is with, as Nicole has said, the revenue side of it, and that is definitely tied into the S2. That said, we have to go back and assume that the people that drafted the bill and those that voted on it probably could not have anticipated all the negative aspects of what was going to happen five years from when that vote was taken. So perhaps there will be some changes. I know that there are hearings going on. I know that there are other persons that are looking, but it is a serious problem. It is not a problem that was caused by the district. I think that's important for everybody to realize, and therefore, it's got the answer, the solution cannot be just from the district. It either has to be from the taxpayers or the legislature.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. I appreciate that. Are there any other questions or comments? I would just like to thank Mr. Boginsky, first time in the job as business administrator, and he did an excellent job with the presentation.
Ms. Primili, can I just ask, Ms. Morris, do you report that to the state, what you just reported to us tonight?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Are you also going to the state hearings to advocate? As you're sitting here for us, and you see what's happening, and we have people going to the state hearings, will you be attending as well to advocate for us to show that the formula is not working?
I have not been invited, and I would have to go through the State Department of Education because there are monitors, as I'm sure you know, all over the state, and I don't think that that is a particular part of the job description that the department would want us to become involved in, because it's not one of the areas that, to my knowledge, has ever been done, that a monitor has been asked or, you know, to go to a hearing for that purpose.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. So that does conclude my superintendent's report. Ms. Primili, back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Primili. At this time, any standing committees that have met since the previous board meeting will report. We have a Buildings and Grounds report. Chairperson is Mr. McCarron. Please report.
Yes, Buildings and Grounds, some capital improvement projects that took place, Rosenhour faculty boys' and girls' restroom upgrades, the ceiling tiles and light fixtures, Switlick Room 29, there was a new coil replacement for the HVAC system, Switlick Room 35, new unit for HVAC replacement, Liberty Trainer's Office area, there is a new UNT for HVAC replaced, McAuliffe Room 128A, new UNT replaced for HVAC, and McAuliffe, there was a new fire panel installed.
Thank you, Mr. McCarron. Budget and Finance met on February 27th, March 12th, and our next scheduled meeting is April 16th. I will not reiterate with Ms. Primili and Mr. Boginsky already reviewed, so I will move forward with our ad hoc committees that have met over the past month. We have Scholarship. Chairperson is Ms. Cass.
Yes, I met with Scholarship last week. We sent out information to advertise in the pamphlet, which goes out on Scholarship Night, which is June 6th. I'm sorry, May 6th, I believe. So the students receive scholarships throughout the district from several businesses throughout the township. If you're a parent of a senior and you'd like to donate, that we have, the scholarship is on our website, the Scholarship Fund. If not, you can also contact me. It's a great night, and a lot of students, they apply, they write essays. It's a great program that helps our children get little extra funds to go to college next year. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cass. State and County School Board Representative, Chairperson, Ms. Rivera, please report.
Yes, Monday, March 25th, 6 o'clock, the Eighth Grade Dialogue at Tom's River Intermediate East, and the next County Hybrid Meeting will be April 24th, 6 o'clock, at the Claren Hotel on Tom's River.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Advocacy Committee Chairperson, Ms. Gardella, please report.
Good evening. We did not have a formal meeting, but I felt it was appropriate for us to report on all the work that we've been doing this month. Tonight, we will be making a public resolution to support Alex Zawicki's Bills Number 1286 and 1282. 1286 has a state cover 100% of non-public transportation costs if a district meets outlined criteria, and Bill A1282 covers 100% of special education costs for both in-district and out-of-district students. Allison Barokas, Giuseppe Palmieri, and myself attended the GOP Club Meeting on February 28th to discuss the state of the district. We got good feedback, and we're hoping that community members present can get board members to speak in various communities, including, we spoke to some people in the adult communities, so that would be beneficial. Members of the committee met with Assemblyman Zawicki on March 7th, and we discussed, you know, obviously, a lot of the items that were discussed tonight, so I won't reiterate them, but, you know, our lack of funding in certain areas. We attended the Town Council Meeting to also let people know in the community where we're at. It's been mentioned several times, Mr. Boginsky and Mr. Palmieri testified, Mr. Palmieri tonight, today, at the state budget hearings. Ms. Primili testifies next week. Ms. Primili and Mr. Boginsky also gave some documentation to Senator Henry at his request. They also met with Ross Damer, who is a Policy and Budget Director, about possible legislation to solve the state funding aid cuts. The committee has sent several emails and phone calls requesting virtual meetings with legislators. We got some response from, we reached out to, I don't know, six or seven, and we are going to meet with Assemblyman Rumpf tomorrow, Assemblyman Fryman on Friday, Assemblyman Schaffenberger on March 27th, and hopefully with Senator Henry on March 26th. We also have a meeting that we set up on Monday, March 25th with surrounding S2 districts, and the hope is to get everybody to advocate collectively. So, you know, I just wanted the community and all the board members who might not be aware to know that, you know, we are working hard trying to raise awareness of what's happening in Jackson, and the surrounding school districts have been cut.
Thank you, Ms. Gardella. Enrollment Study Committee Chairperson, Mr. McCarron, please report.
Yes, the Enrollment Committee met on March 7th. We did a review of current enrollment numbers. We reviewed the maximum school capacity numbers and compared the capacity numbers to the enrollment numbers. Currently, schools over capacity include Getz, Johnson, Holman, Switlick, and Rosenhour. Discussed trailers that are being used in the district for student classrooms, and currently, we don't have our next meeting scheduled, but it'll be sometime over the summer.
Thank you, Mr. McCarron. I need a motion for approval of policy second reading revised adoption.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the minutes, the closed session meeting, February 21st, 2024, and the official board meeting, February 21st, 2024, business meeting.
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
I just wanted to ask on our minutes, I abstained from one of my votes for all of Jackson Memorial's coaches. Is there any way to put on the minute that that was due to lack of data so the next people on the board can understand that vote?
I don't see why that couldn't be added in the minutes to reflect the reason for your vote. Sure. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the bill list.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the Treasurers and Board Secretaries' reports.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes. I need a motion to open public forum on agenda items only. We will hold another public forum during this meeting for other questions. This public forum will be for agenda questions only.
Motion. Second.
I would like to, I would like to first welcome, I should say, Assemblyman Alex Zawicki. He is in attendance today. He is a fierce defender of the Jackson School District. He did approach me earlier this week and asked if he could address this board during this time, and I would love for him to please come up to the podium, Mr. Assemblyman Zawicki, and address this board.
And if I may, Mr. President, I do have a list of bills that I've sponsored related to education that I could pass down, if that's all right?
Certainly, Assemblyman.
All right, while those are being passed down, good evening, and thank you, Superintendent, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Business Administrator, members of the board, and parents in the audience for having me here tonight. I will say, it's tough to follow that presentation. You know, again, it was very well done, but certainly, it's tough to look at those numbers and come up here as a member of the General Assembly, which, you know, the state is what's caused this problem. One of the things I want to make sure is clear, one, I've said very publicly, the S2 formula is an absolute disaster. Make no qualms about it. It is an absolute disaster. It was poorly constructed. The fact that it takes into account property tax value is a major part of the problem. And I'll underscore that by saying this, and I think people need to understand, when we talk about state aid, state aid is your income tax, all right? So every resident of this town has paid income tax to the state. State aid is the proportion of that income tax that comes back to fund the education of our children. It is disproportionate in Jackson, it's disproportionate in a lot of other school districts. The idea that now those residents who've already paid an absorbent amount of income tax should now pay more property tax to make up for it is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. There's proposals out there right now to raise the cap. That's not the solution, all right? Adding more taxes to residents who are already taxed the highest in the country in property tax is a ludicrous idea. It's absolutely ludicrous. What needs to happen is the income tax that the residents are already paying to the state need to come back and support their children, and I'll explain that a little bit, and as I did to the Assembly Budget Committee this morning. So I was there this morning, and my goal was to highlight extraordinary circumstances to that board, all right? My approach is the same that it's been since I took this office, which is to work across the aisle, find common sense, and get some things done in the interest of our residents. So when I started speaking to the Assembly Budget Committee, it was with that in mind. There are members of the Budget Committee on both sides of the aisle that I've worked with very well already in the last 18 months that I've been in office, and I can tell you, there are members on that Budget Committee on the other side of the aisle who are experiencing the same problems, which, you know, hopefully will help our case, all right? You know, when I talked to them, I wanted to make sure that they understood real metrics on how we measured the success or not of what S2 has done so far. So when I talk about state aid, I talked about the fact that the Newark City School District, which gets $1.25 billion in state aid, also has a over $30,000 allocation of state aid per student. Jackson, as I'm sure you probably know, is down to 3,500 at this point. Tom's River was mentioned, they're down to less than 2,000, okay? So Newark City School District is getting over $30,000 a student. Our kids are getting 3,500. So the income tax that the residents in Jackson paid to the state is going to Newark and other districts other than this district. Let's be really clear about that, all right? So when we start talking about, well, this district, these residents need to pay more property tax, it is absurd that the residents of this town should have to pay more property tax when their income taxes are going to a school district that gets over $30,000 per student. Now, the argument, of course, on that is that that district needs that extra money. That's the argument, right? Well, throwing more money at that... Well, throwing more money at that district has not worked. In the last month, the results of, of that district have come out, and they are dismal, dismal. One-third of third graders can read at third grade level, all right? I was questioned on this, and I was even challenged on it a little bit this morning from, from a member of the, the committee. I want to be clear, nobody wants to see those students do bad, right? We want all children to perform well, all right? But it cannot be at the expense of this district and other districts within the state, all right? You cannot funnel $1.25 billion of your income taxes to one school district. And to, to make sure we're clear, and these numbers, these numbers admittedly change day to day, but the latest numbers are that while the administration has claimed that they have, for the first time in history, fully funded this school formula, 151 school districts this year lost funding. 151, all right? Out of the 21 counties in the state, three counties lost funding, Ocean, Monmouth, and Cape May. Those three counties lost funding, all right? For a total of 151 school districts, for a total of $107 million. The Newark School District this year got 101 million more. Think about that. 100, or excuse me, 151 districts lost 107 million. One school district got over 100 million of that money, almost dollar for dollar. It's infuriating. And the results, the results of that district, again, show that throwing money at that district isn't improving it. So what I suggested to the Assembly Member that challenged me on this was, you need to treat that district as a separate problem. Figure it out. But chaos is a definition, the definition of chaos is you keep doing the same thing, right? So this is the second year in a row that school district has gotten that kind of funding, additional, all right? It's not working, simple as that. So fix that as a separate issue. Don't do it while you're simultaneously destroying other, other districts. Like I said, I went into it in the spirit of partnership. I will give you some hope, because I think this board and the residents of Jackson, as well as the rest of the residents of District 12, need some. I will tell you, in my relatively short time in the Assembly, it's not like what you see federally, right? I mean, we watch the news, and we, we see how polarized things are at the federal level. While we certainly have our problem, as, as we all know from what we're, we're talking about tonight, and there are issues on both sides of the aisle, there are characters on both sides of the aisle. Generally, I find that most of the people in the, in the General Assembly, and I'd even say the Senate, are there for the right reasons. I think they are there for their constituents, I think they're there for the residents of the state in New Jersey, and I think they generally want to do the right thing. I mean that. If, if I didn't, I wouldn't say it. My approach has been to find common sense, common ground with members on the other side of the aisle, and actually try to get some things done, and have had, you know, some success with that so far. I think that helps when you go to a committee like we went to this morning, and you have members, of course, on both sides of the aisle, as members of that Budget Committee. Again, a committee that can make changes, right? This is a committee that can actually influence change in the proposed budget, right? So having, having established those relationships with, you know, I can think of off the top of my head at least three on the other side of the aisle that are on that committee, and knowing that they are also dealing with the same issues, meaning they have school districts that are in precarious situations, just like this one. So they are going to, first off, be pressured to do something, but I will say I know them well, I think they want to do something, all right? As an example, if you recall last year, as the Superintendent, Superintendent mentioned and the BA mentioned, you knew, coming into last year, as you did this year, what you were supposed to lose. Last year, you got a number that was three times that number. One of the members of the Budget Committee put in a bill to restore the two-thirds that was, was put in on top of what you were expected to, to pass. I co-sponsored that bill, it passed, and that funding came back, right? Imagine if it didn't, you know, I mean, you just saw the numbers. A similar bill has already been proposed. I was asked this morning to co-sponsor it. So that same member who's on the Budget Committee put in a bill to restore 105 million dollars across all the districts. You know, I, of course, will be lobbying hard on that, on that bill, so we can see if we can get a good portion of, of the funding back. You know, with respect to other things that I've been working on, right out of the gate, in fact, the very first bill I ever put in as a member of the Assembly was the day I was sworn in, and it was to address the private school funding mandate, funding, bus mandate. As you know, for non-public schools, the state requires a mandate that the school district makes up a portion of that, that private school bus transportation cost. It's, and in probably most, most parts of the state, it's really not a problem, but when you have a disproportionate amount of it here, as, as we saw from the numbers, where, you know, six, seven years ago, the, the number was virtually zero, and now, at, at last check, I think it's somewhere between five to six million dollars you're approaching, just for private school busing. To be clear, this is not the families of the private schools' fault, it is not the students of the private schools' fault, it's the state's fault, just like this situation you're in is the state's fault, all right? The state has a, a mandate, the state doesn't fund 100% of that mandate. The state has a lot of mandates, and they fund them, right? So you're left, this, this governing body is left with a situation where transportation costs have gone up across the entire state, everywhere, right? Inflation, cost, cost of gas, cost of school bus drivers, it's gone up everywhere. And we are also in a situation where we have the fastest-growing non-public school bus obligation in the state. It's growing faster than any other town in the state right now. You know, you, you think about that growth in Lakewood, they've already had their growth, right? The, the percentage growth year over year is, is the highest in the state here in Jackson. Again, not those parents' fault, not those students' fault, it's the state's fault, all right? So the first bill I put in was to do two things. One, create a consortium, which later passed, but the other part of that that I, I put in was for the state to fund the state mandate. Thank you, that is one of the bills tonight that I heard you're, you're putting up for a resolution and support of. So I want to continue to keep pushing on that to make sure that that gets addressed. And I'd say in general, what I have been doing with respect to bills that are on, on the list there, I'll, I'll just highlight a couple of them for you, really is to attack the budget needs line item by line item, right? So if you look at 1282, which I understand you're also supporting tonight, provides for full funding of an extraordinary special education state aid. This morning, when I spoke to the Budget Committee, I highlighted really two towns in my district, of, of course, Jackson, and our neighbor Plumstead, which, if you don't know, it has also informed me that they too will be taking a loan this year for the first time ever, all right? So as the Superintendent mentioned, Jackson, our neighbor Plumstead, you probably know Lakewood, our, our other neighbors, already over $200 million in, in debt with respect to loans. Tom's River is taking a loan, and I actually talked to the Superintendent of Lacey after my testimony this morning. She informed me they are, they are taking a loan as well, as, as I think you know, Superintendent. So you went from, the idea of a loan with a school district 10 years ago was virtually unheard of, to now you have multiple school districts within Ocean County alone that now have to take loans, right? So again, it comes back to S2 being a, an absolute disaster. I'm not really sure what other proof you need of that at this point. You know, once you start talking loans, you know, come on, right? I may have diverted there a bit, but I, I will come back to one other thing. There was a question about, you know, is, was there a letter sent from the state or a report? Thanks to all of you and, and the other districts I've met with, I, I too have been very, very well-educated on, on how things work now, and so the, the report that we're referring to, just to be clear, maybe for, for anyone listening in, the report we're talking about is provided by the Department of Education, right? The big issue with the formula, in my opinion, is the very first number on there is, is the equalization aid, right? We started where the state said we were $16 million overfunded. You got it wrong right out of the gate, simple as that. And the, and the stats that we see now absolutely prove that, right? Within the report itself, again, we're calculated, calculated numbers, so there is some glimpse, there is some glimpse into how S2 works with this report, right? Because it does calculate, if they were going to provide it, this is the aid that they would provide line item by line item. Special education, which I'm, I'm going by memory here, so don't quote me on the exact numbers, was over $7 million, what they quoted we should be getting, we got five, all right? It, it came into something like 2.5 million less than what the Department of Education said Jackson Township should get, right? With transportation, it was over $7 million, and as you saw, for the last six, seven years, the town's been getting 600,000, right? And that doesn't even take into the non-private, or the non-public school bus issues, and it certainly doesn't take into account inflation and the fact that your school transportation budget is over 20 million, 20 million dollars, right? But even by the Department of Education's own report, they said you should be getting 7 million, and it says right next to it, but we're only getting 600,000, right? The thing that's blowing that out of the water for us and not, and not getting it is this top number that says, according to our calculations, you're getting at or above what you should be getting for equalization, right? Jackson is not the only school district that has that problem. Our neighbors in Plumstead are also experiencing this problem, and part of my testimony this morning, in addition to giving examples just like I, I gave, which is where I started, I wanted to highlight that we can't just look at this year, right? If you look at this year, you're missing, you're missing it, all right? Because Plumstead got an increase this year. The cumulative effects, though, have brought them to the fact that they now have to take a $3 million loan at last check, all right? So one of the big things that I wanted to really get across to the Budget Committee this morning was, you cannot just look at this year, you have to look at the cumulative effects over time, all right? With respect to our, our monitor, one other bill that I have is for the state to pay for the monitor. The state caused this problem, I want to be clear about that, and I want to be clear to the parents that might be listening in. This group of people have worked incredibly hard for the circumstances that the, the state has dealt them. The state caused this fiscal problem, this school district was operating fiscally before The school district was adding programs like STEM, and, yeah, I'm guessing at this point, just because I see it in my own children's schedules, two dozen AP classes, somewhere approaching that number. When I went here, and, and I did, we had one, AP history. That was it, all right? The number of AP classes that you offer now is amazing. The academies, like Digital Academy, which I've, I've had at least one, one of my children go through, you know, are all value adds that this district has brought over time, and you have historically done it with great fiscal responsibility. So again, I want to stress that the issue that Jackson is facing, the issue that Plumstead's facing, and numerous other towns just in Ocean County are the state's fault, not yours, all right? I know you know that, but I want to make sure everybody else knows that as well. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm not done fighting for you. You know, I, I did get a little fired up, admittedly, this morning after some questions. Like I said, I started off nice and, and did it in the spirit of cooperation and, and again, to, to make sure that, that the, the Budget Committee understood the specifics of, of this situation. But there were a couple of questions lobbed at me that I, I, I thought were shots, so I did fire back a little bit, admittedly, but other than that, I think it, it went If you want to see the testimony, I'm not trying to plug my Facebook page here, but since, since yours is coming out tonight, I, I thought I'd mention, just for anybody who wants to see it, if you go on Facebook, I'm at, my, my official page is Assemblyman Alex Sawicki. I, I don't expect you to know how to spell the last name, it, it's pretty messed up, but the video from this morning is there, including responses to questions that, that were posed. You know, I, I think we got our points across, I, I think I quoted the numbers pretty accurately from what I, I saw up on the board, and I do believe our concerns were heard. I mean that. I, I, I do believe that they, they were concerned, the fact that, or were heard, the fact that I did get the questions that I got, the fact that I got them from members across the aisle that I know, again, are, are facing the same problems, gives me a little bit of optimism, all right? So I know there was questions down the end about what, what are we, you know, what are we looking at next year? I am optimistic that there will be changes to this formula. It, it is, it is an absolute disaster. I have a bill in to certainly start looking at it right away, one of the bills listed in the, in the handout that I gave you, and I, I think, you know, there's enough, there are enough members on both sides of the aisle to say, hey, we, we've got to, we've got to fix this thing going forward. It, it can't continue this way, it cannot continue to cause multiple districts, and I do think this was a tipping point this year, where, you know, Jackson was one in my district, I now have two. Jackson was one in Ocean County other than Lakewood, who's, who's been taking loans for, for several years now. But now you're, you're talking about, you know, approaching a half a dozen, and that, those are the ones I know. I mean, there, there could be, there could be more than that, but at least a half a dozen that I know of. You know, if nothing else, and again, with respect, we'll run out of state monitors. You know, I mean, we're just, we're just not going to have enough state monitors to, to, to watch, watch over these things, and not, not that, and again, with respect, not that I think you need one. Again, you, you didn't cause this problem, the state caused this problem, and the state needs to figure it out and fix it. So just know that that's the part I'm going to play. I will continue to push hard to get some of these bills across the finish line, and I certainly work with my colleagues across the aisle to, to make significant changes to this formula next year, so we can kind of get everybody out of this, this precarious situation. So with that, I, I welcome any questions.
I think you covered everything pretty good.
Covered it all? Okay. Well, thank you again for having me, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Assemblyman, and thank you for your continued advocacy for this, this district. Thank you so much. So if anyone else has anything on agenda items only, please sign in and state your name, and whether or not you are a Jackson resident, each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on the topic until all others have been heard. Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to move finance.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barocas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes. I need a motion to move facilities.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call. Discussion, sorry. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barocas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes. I need a motion to move programs.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barocas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond.
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Mrs. Cass.
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri.
Yes. I need a motion to move students.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McCarron.
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas.
Yes.
Dr. Osmond.
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Mrs. Cass.
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri.
Yes. I need a motion to move personnel.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella.
Abstain from number 20, letter M, yes, everything else.
Mr. McCarron.
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas.
Yes.
Dr. Osmond.
Abstain from number 12, letter F, everything else, yes.
Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Mrs. Cass.
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri.
Yes. I need a motion to open public forum on any topic pertaining to the Board of Education.
Second.
Please sign in and state your name, and whether or not you are a Jackson resident, each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on the topic until all others have been heard. Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will now go to board comments, starting with Mr. McCarron.
Just want to congratulate both high schools on their shows. I was able to make it to Beauty and the Beast and Saw Eclipse of Mary Poppins, both did a great job on, on their performances. Also was asked to mention that Gatz Middle School has their high school musical coming up this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and the show will be at Jackson Memorial High School. Thank you.
Thanks for everybody for coming out today. Congratulations to the freshmen who won at Battle of the Classes, that was a really fun event. I know my son personally looks forward to that every year, and it's fun for the kids who are playing the games on the, in the gym, and it's a lot of fun for the people in the stands as well. Thanks for a really good presentation, that was very, very clear, and hopefully people realize that the district really is doing everything they can to keep all of the programs that are important to our kids around, and that the, the district has been fiscally responsible. It's really sad where we are right now, for us and our, and the surrounding towns.
I want to thank everyone for attending in person and live stream, and the budget presentation, the input. Thank you, Assemblyman Sewicki, for your presentation, advocacy, collaboration, and understanding. Everyone have a wonderful and safe evening.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say I really enjoyed reading to Mrs. Hous's third-grade class at Elms Elementary during their Read Across America Week. Thank you for having me. I also had the pleasure of seeing both high school plays, Beauty and the Beast and Mary Poppins. As always, they both blew me away, excellent job by all students involved. And lastly, I'd like to give a big thank you to Assemblyman Sewicki and President Palmieri for speaking at the Budget Committee hearing today on behalf of the Jackson School District and other surrounding districts. It takes a village, and my family thanks you both for being part of ours. Thank you.
My turn?
Yes.
Good evening. I wanted to concur about the Read Across America at Elms. It was an awesome week of activities. Not only did I read to a third-grade class, I also participated in the Read Across America night with my daughter, and I wanted to give a thank you to the school, the PTN, the JEA, they really did a nice job there, I'm sure they did in, you know, numerous buildings, but I did get to experience that. And, you know, I just want to end, for this huge audience, to say that, you know, the Board of Education, everybody up here, the administrators and our local legislators are really working hard to bring education on what's happening to our revenue sources here in Jackson. And, you know, we urge residents to attend our meetings and get themselves also educated. I think the presentation tonight, you know, to be honest, I came in really hot, over 200% increase in a loan amount, I won't, you know, I didn't ask any questions, but I was very upset about it. But in the end, you guys did a tremendous job on explaining exactly how we got there. And I think a lot of times, within our community, you know, money makes people aggravated at one another, and I think the really, most upsetting part of it is that what the state has done has actually created divide amongst people. And that's really, you know, gets down to the, to where I feel, you know, we could sit here and people could argue their point or the other point, but in the end, what they have done is created chaos and discourse between individuals in our town, and hopefully there's a resolution, and we thank you, Assemblymen, for working for that. And we're going to continue to push, you know, your colleagues to understand where we're at, and we hope good things will come from that, so thank you.
First, I just wanted to welcome Dr. Godlessy, this is her first meeting, and she's joining us this week, so it's great to have you here. I wanted to thank the, I hope I pronounced this correctly, but the Kacmarzki family, because they donated a keyboard and a stand to the McAuliffe School Band Program, and the Medili family, who donated a protective L screen to the McAuliffe Middle School baseball team. So both of those, it's always great when we have families that help out in addition to our needs, so it's wonderful. I too want to thank Mr. Sewicki for being here today, going to the hearings, Mr. Palmieri as well, and your advocacy is, is just outstanding, and you know that we need it. $30 million, I just want that to sink in for everyone. And I agree wholeheartedly with what Ms. Gardella just said, I think it did create a lot of divisiveness in this town. So it's, it's really tough. But the good news is, we, I did get to see Mary Poppins, and I think that it was amazing. We do still have a 93.8% graduation rate in this town. We have stellar programs in our district, and I think we're all fighting to keep them. We don't want to see them go away, so, thank you.
I'd just like to thank, once again, I'd like to thank Assemblyman Sewicki for his presentation. I'd like to thank you for speaking so eloquently and fighting so fiercely for Jackson. I'd also like to just say that I will continue to advocate for a fair and equitable funding formula in our district. And I will echo what Ms. Primili said when she was presenting the budget, that nothing else will be cut that we need. And I will not vote for anything else to be cut that we need. This district will remain strong, and this district will continue to provide a stupendous education to all of its students. And I would just also like to say, I'm really excited that we have Facebook now. I, I think that's great. I'm super excited, I'm going to be the fir, I'm going to be the first follower tonight, I'm going to be watching for it. So thank you all, and have a good evening. I need a motion to adjourn. By acclamation. Aye.[1786.83][1786.83]